Bruce, can you hear me okay?
I hear you just fine now.
Great.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Let's see, let's get this started. So I'll call this meeting to order October 13th, 2025 Historic Preservation Board Meeting. We'll start with the roll call. Since I'm not present in the room, Christina, do you want to lead that?
Sure thing. District one, Emily Taylor.
Present.
District two is vacant. District three, Deborah Miller Stevens.
Present.
District four, Janice Baum Dixon has an excused absence for today. District five, Celeste Rossette.
Present.
District six, Claire Willenberg.
Present.
And Mayor Appointee Bruce Rowley.
Present. Thank you. Let's see, let me get my agenda pulled up in front of me. I believe next we'll have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Is that what's? Yeah, I'm sorry, approval of the agenda. Has anyone had a chance to look at today's agenda? If so, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Rossette moves to approve the agenda for today.
Willenberg seconds.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for today. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next, we'll move to the approval of the minutes from our meeting September 8th. Does anyone have any discussion or questions about those minutes?
Just a correction I have to make on my end. Jenna Morgan pointed out that Sharon Dickgraf was actually the attorney present for this meeting, not Jenna Morgan, so I will make that correction.
Okay. Can I have a second, sorry, a motion and a second?
Willenberg moves to approve with the addition correction by Christina Reed.
Rossette seconds.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Let us, let's move into the consent agenda. We have a couple of items here for Christina to review with us.
Good afternoon. Christina Reed with planning staff here to present the consent agenda in the Topeka Emporia Historic District. They removed two layers of composition shingles and one layer of wood shingles down to the space decking. My assumption is that when the National Register Historic Preservation, or sorry, the National Register Nomination Form was completed for the Topeka Emporia Historic District, that they had asphalt shingles on their roof, so that's how it was recorded. So even though the original wood shingles may be underneath, the, my, my logic is that they are replacing in kind, and this is at 1141 North Emporia. For HBC 2025 00106 Allen's Market, this is at East Douglas and Chautauqua. I had an extensive discussion with the contractor to ensure that all of the coping would not hang over the brick on the rear side, and that it would not affect the carth light that is at the top of the building on the southeast and west facades. So this is another roof replacement, and with that, I will stand for questions.
Are there any questions for Christina? Any public comment? Okay, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Rossette moves to accept the consent agenda.
Rowley seconds. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, that motion carries. Let's move on to, we have an item of unfinished business. This is the Grace Methodist Episcopal Church. We deferred this last time because we wanted it to go through MAPC prior to us taking any action on it. So Christina, I believe that has happened now. Do you want to update everyone on this?
Yes, I'm not going to go over the entire report again. I'll just go over the highlights that were not covered in the previous meeting. So this was heard by the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission on September 25th. The action of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission was to approve the requested zone change. That was 12 to 1, and then it went to the District Advisory Board on October 1st of this year. And they, the District Advisory Board actually had a deadlock 5 to 5. And the reason that we're reviewing this today is because any action by a city on a historic property cannot proceed until it has been reviewed by the SHIPPO, or in this case, the Historic Preservation Board, because we act on behalf of the SHIPPO, and to determine whether it will damage or destroy a historic property. So I'm actually just going to skip ahead to just some of the site photos real quick. This is looking east towards, east, I believe east towards the site, yes. Or no, sorry, looking, yes, it was east, yes, and this is looking west away from the site. I didn't have the captions there. Let's just go through some of the site photos. I'm not going to say next slide, please, I'll just, because we've seen them before. And here's a copy of the PUD, and with that, I will stand for any questions.
Christina, can you just clarify? We're looking at this really just with regards to the setback. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, in my opinion, based on the Secretary of the Interior standards, how we would apply this zoning change request to the historic property is that, in my, in staff's opinion, it's a benefit that if the property or if the structure is substantially damaged, that there is the opportunity with this PUD that it can be rebuilt as it is in place. That's a long way to say yes.
It's a non-conforming lot right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I interject a question to follow that up, though? This proposed change, though, on parcel two, is not going to correct or fix the state of the condition of the historic property on parcel one, correct?
That is my understanding. The way that it, so I will defer to the applicant for their explanation of how the entire development is going to pan out, because I'm assuming there, that, you know, some funding from one parcel may benefit another, but again, I will defer to the applicant for their plans on that.
Are there any other questions for Christina on this?
And Christina, can you confirm that this is only in consideration because of the listing of the church building itself?
Correct.
Parcel two has no historic, there's nothing historic.
It's not registered as a historic property.
Okay, thank you.
And to follow up on that question, too, then that, to me, raises the question of if it's, if we're not really changing the state of parcel one, which is the historic property, I'm not sure why this is in our hands to determine this zoning variance approval.
It's strictly because of state preservation law. They're doing a zone change on the property. We have to evaluate it as a Historic Preservation Board. Does, does that make sense?
Again, wouldn't that fall only to parcel one, though?
Correct.
And at this point, the landowner is not making any proposed changes to parcel one.
Well, back in last year, we approved the interior renovations that would convert this to multifamily. Again, that was a separate case, but this development as a whole, I mean, they're, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how to put this into words, but we already approved the renovations to the interior to convert it into multifamily housing.
And the zone change applies to both. Right now, there is no parcel one and parcel two. The proposed planned unit development zoning would create parcel one and parcel two. So the zoning affects both sides of the alley, parcel one being where the church structure is now, and it changes the development standards of that piece of land to reduce the setbacks in order to bring the building into compliance with our current code, meaning it would set the setbacks where the building sits right now, because right now, the setbacks are greater, which makes the building non-conforming. So even though our understanding, again, we'll defer to the applicant, is that their phase one development would happen on parcel two, the whole zone change includes the piece of land that the church is on, which is why it's before us today. Any future possible modifications to the building, the church building would have to come before this board, again, as building permit initiated, applications, this is a zone change application that affects the building because it's including the property that the building is on.
So to clarify, they couldn't do anything to parcel two without this approved zoning change that affects parcel one, is that correct?
The way in which they want to develop parcel two requires this zone change in some capacity. It's complex, but in general, they're seeking this zone change to develop parcel two in a way in which they would like to, in addition to developing parcel one by modifying the use of the church. Any structural, any, meaning like, there, we can defer to the applicant, but like, right now, the zone change only changes the setbacks on parcel one to bring the church building into compliance.
But also allows the split to two parcels?
Two zoning parcels. So the way a PUD is written is you can have a zoning parcel that has certain rules of development, and then parcel two can have certain rules of development. It is still cohesively owned as one property. They're just allowing different uses on different parcels.
Two-part question. Do we have any idea if what we approved, which was an excellent plan, and in our opinion, I think the board all liked it, is that still in effect?
Yes, it runs with the land. So, you know, if they just, if they get a building permit tomorrow, if they get it next year, they have the approval from 2024 to convert the church into multifamily units.
Part two, since we're somewhat connected with parcel two, but not really, is there a way to clarify, or would that be up to permitting that each of the container units will have access to their own sewer and water?
That's not within our jurisdiction today.
My part of that, I was trying to ask, whose jurisdiction does that fall in?
That's under parcel two, which is not on the church property.
What part of anybody has jurisdiction over section two to make sure that happens?
That's with building permits, and they would have to follow all building and sanitation codes for any construction.
Would that require, would building and permitting, for my edification, would their standards require separate sewer and water in each container unit?
Yes, so on page nine of your staff report, it says, "Development of the site will not be permitted without connection to public water and sewer."
Does that mean to the lot or to the individual units?
I will defer to the applicant on that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of what the building and sanitation codes, or whether or not each unit has to have its own bathroom, or whether or not they could have a common bathroom, but again, that's kind of beyond the purview.
It's beyond ours.
You know, where they're not, they're planning to use existing facilities in the building, in the church building, but still, those sanitation rooms, those bathrooms already exist in the building. I don't really know if it's the purview of the Historic Preservation Board on whether or not people on one side can use bathrooms in another side.
I'm bringing up some questions from neighbors in the area.
Sure, but we're trying to keep this narrowly tailored of.
I understand, that's not our question today.
Will the zone change have any, you know, detrimental effects, damage or destroy the existing structure?
Understood. It's not part of my decision-making today.
Sure, but just for the record, whether or not each unit proposed on parcel two has its own bathroom is not subject to historic preservation law.
Just because I wasn't here, so I, I know there's issues I'm not familiar with, but in referring to general provisions, it says under number four, "New utility shall be installed underground on all parcels." So when we approve this zoning change for parcel one, and if they do do this development on parcel two with the multifamily, new utilities will have to be installed underground on all parcels. Am I reading that correctly? Because that's under general provisions.
Correct, so that'd be like electric service lines, that'd be utility service lines for water and sewer, cable, internet, all of those types of utilities. Essentially, they're saying they're not going to be aerial, like an electric service line going through the air, they would bury it underground to get to the unit.
And if they end up changing the permit, or, you know, if they end up having an electrical permit, a mechanical permit, building permit for these utilities, it will go to the Historic Preservation Board, so.
Last question for me, and I apologize, I appreciate your patience. When I was not on the board last year, have they made these improvements to the subject property as approved?
Not to my knowledge, but I will defer to the applicant for clarification.
Do we have the applicant present?
Yes, sir, he's on his way up to the podium.
Excellent, thank you.
Kirk Miller, K E Miller Engineering, I'm the agent for the applicant. I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. My first question is, since I wasn't on the board last year, have these, and I'll read it from our packet, "Last year, as part of the facade improvement program, the Wichita Historic Preservation Board approved interior renovations to the subject site and recommended," they denied the aluminum windows, but did you do the interior renovations as approved last year?
I don't believe they've done anything.
Is there any reason why they've got the approval? I'm just curious.
I, I don't know. I, I don't know the details of what they've done with the existing building, or why they have or haven't done anything. I know they've been trying to get certain grants for this property, and that may be what's holding it up.
The only thing that bothers me about approving the zoning change for parcel one and parcel two, which is what's on our agenda today, is it does seem like something that was approved last year by this board, to see improvement in the property and to see renovations, we gave approval to, but when I looked at the property as part of my homework, I was appalled at the condition of the building and the deterioration of the building, and so I'm just curious if we are looking at this in order to give them the setback they need to develop the property further, including parcel two, will they really follow through on their promises to actually develop in a proper way? It just, it was an deteriorated church, it looked awful.
Yes, it does look awful, I'm not going to argue with that. They're tying the two parcels together, the uses with these apartments that they're building on the east side, there'll be uses on the church side that will be accessory uses for these apartments. You know, they're going to have a weight room and a gymnasium and cafeteria and all that kind of stuff over on the west side, in the church school, the old school part of the church.
My memory is not great, but I remember it being apartments.
It'll be apartments, but there are other things that go with the apartments, too.
Is there any way that the property could be secured?
They're planning on putting a fence around it, yes. Okay.
It has not been secured, and a lot of, like, the stained glass windows have been broken out, yada, yada.
Are there any other questions for the applicant agent?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll open this up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public to speak on this?
Yes, thank you. Amy Liker, 1002 South Broadway. I'm also an owner of the vacant lots at 1003 and 1007 South Topeka. I spoke to you last time about this property and how the applicant had not fulfilled the special application requirements for planned unit developments. I don't see the updated information in your agenda packets, so I don't know how that gets passed along, but at the September 25th MAPC meeting, the applicant came back with some additional information and said that they are planning up to 35 apartments in the existing building, and now, instead of 11 shipping containers on parcel two, they're planning 22 shipping containers on parcel two, so these would be stacked. Neighbors are opposed to this, I think it's important for you all to know that, and for good reason. They only want to provide 36 parking spaces for 57 apartments, that is half the amount that you would normally have to provide for an apartment complex of that size. Neighbors are concerned about parking in the area. We are absolutely concerned about the condition of the property now, and as has been pointed out here today, there was a wrecking permit and some other things that were approved for that church last year. None of that construction has happened. We've lived in the neighborhood for two years, and this is like the biggest nuisance property in my immediate area right now. Neighbors would love to see something constructive done with this church, but we feel like this is not the project for it, especially considering that shipping containers and reduced parking and no care has been given to the existing building right now. It's also my understanding that the setback issue doesn't have to be handled through a planned unit development, that it can be handled through a variance. So we, neighbors also kind of feel like, you know, the setback issue is something that was just thrown in there, and it could be handled in a different way. So again, there are lots of neighbors in this area that are opposed to this, I think it's important to share that, and we would just ask that, even if my comments don't matter for your purposes today, that we just want to make sure that you're aware of, of the condition of the property over there and how neighbors feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Do we have anyone online for public comments?
I'm here.
Sir, we've got one more up front.
Name's Tim Corre, I'm at 1002 South Broadway, and also there's properties on Topeka. Just to keep this in the focus of the historic property, this is to approve, will not damage, destroy the historic property, recommend approval, and you're recommending approval on something that's already been damaged and destroyed. These people have not been good stewards of the property. We've watched it be damaged repeatedly, they've thrown a fence up in the last eight months, incomplete, it's, it's, we're watching damage. They're throwing this PUD to correct setbacks, which, for what if, and instead of addressing the current condition, they already have what they need to fix and repair it as approved a year ago, none of that's been done. This PUD is not necessary, if the building is destroyed tomorrow, they could do it with a variance and rebuild, and be allowed to go through that process that way, and which would not present an issue for repairing this building. This building is, I guess it is damaged, the stained glass, and if you walked out there any evening now, it is actually currently inhabited with bats. There's a lovely flock that comes out every evening from the top of that church, because it's insecure. So just that being said, I think the better use for this property would be, instead of doing a PUD, use your current zoning and fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone online for public comment.
Okay, so we'll bring this back to the board. Having heard the public comments, is there, are there any other questions or discussion on the board?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say, I really sympathize with the neighbors and with what I think all of us are feeling, that how this property is being treated present day is pitiful, that I'm really not a fan of the proposed development on parcel two, and I really wish that that was in our jurisdiction to have some say in. I wish that MAPC or the DAB would have, you know, taken a stand for some of this, but if we're really only looking at parcel one and correcting a setback, I, that, it doesn't seem out of line with what we're like explicitly called to do, so I'm really, I'm really torn about this, because I hate what's happening here, but as it sits with just the jurisdiction of our board, I, I think the recommendation to approve, as it relates, just the building of a setback is probably right.
Thanks, Emily, I agree. It is, it's really tough. I drove this property yesterday. On the other hand, you know, I, I find it difficult to understand why stopping a On the other hand, you know, I, I find it difficult to understand why stopping a project moving forward helps preserve a property that is actively in crisis. So in, in that way, I, I have to look at this, I feel like, you know, I have to look at this from the standpoint of our Historic Preservation Board mandate, what are, what are we being asked to look at this for? And really separate my feelings from all the other things and ask myself, what is the best thing for this historic property? Stopping any forward, any possible forward momentum on it seems like the opposite of preservation. And while I agree that it's possible that, that there are other methods that they could try to do, such as a variance, whichever method they chose is the one in front of us, and we're being asked to simply look at that and ask, how does that apply to this historic property? And so in that way, I'll have to vote in, in that manner.
But let me clear again, if you don't bear with me, it does say here, and we've talked about this before, that the remodeling could be done without this variance. They could be taking care of the building now according to how you all approved it last year. They don't need the variance to move ahead to take care of this church. The variance is what's going to be allowed, if I've heard this correctly, to allow them to develop parcel two and make it a multifamily property, correct?
That is my understanding, and, and I don't have the applicant here, if they were, I would ask them, what seems like the obvious answer to me is, these projects are very expensive, and my guess would be that revenues coming in from the additional development will support the work that's being done on the church property, and they're not likely to start that work until they can see their pro forma shaping up a little bit better from the addition of the multifamily housing. Again, that's purely a projection on my part, just based on, on the way that, that I've experienced that. And the longer that we hold them back, the more that property falls apart.
Yeah, I would also say that we're, we're not being asked to evaluate whether there's another method for them to move ahead with work on the church. To Bruce's point, this is the method that they chose, even though I really hate that they shoved parcel one and parcel two together in this one PUD because we're trying to sneak through some things that a lot of people do not like, under something that probably does meet the secretary's standards for the church.
I don't know whether I'd call it sneaking through, I mean, they are going through the other proper channels that are evaluating this.
Yeah, not sneaking.
If we don't like what those bodies have to say, that doesn't have any bearing on what we're doing here today.
Yes, presenting these two parcels together, I think, is what is bringing, it was, what's making everyone feel really conflicted, and it's, it is frustrating.
Otherwise, we wouldn't see it at all, because it would happen purely just through MAPC and variance committees and all of that, and DAB, and the DAB. I mean, unfortunately, we're getting, we're getting this put in front of us and then being asked to close one eye. Are there any other comments on this topic before I ask for a motion? Does anyone want to put forward a motion on this?
Well. I'll go, Bruce. I'm, oh, please tell me I'm reading the right one here.
Looking for it, too.
This, okay. I move to find that PUD 2025-00017 meets the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties in accordance with KSA 75-2724, will not damage or destroy the historic property, and recommend approval of the zoning re-associated with 944 South Topeka Avenue.
It's been moved, do I have a second? Rowley seconds. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed.
Was that an aye?
Ms. Bomber.
I'm going to ask again.
I'm sorry, Ms. Miller Stevens, are you in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Do you want to, I, I, I can't tell where, where we ended up there.
Rosette, opposed.
Willenberg abstained. I just have too close connection with some neighbors.
So this motion carries, I believe, three to one with one abstention.
That's correct.
Is that, okay, thanks. Okay, thank you. We will move on to RX, which is project review, HPC 2025-00113. Christina?
Thank you, Bruce. The applicant for this case has three requests. The first one is replacing the asphalt shingle roof in kind, which is normally something that I would file under the consent agenda, but because it's all together, I'd figure I'd present it at this meeting here. Installing gutters around the perimeter of the main structure and installing new downspouts around the perimeter of the structure. I, I wrote in the report here that they would install half-round gutters. Their initial proposal that you can see in the packet is for K-style. The half-round recommendation really came from, you know, my, my observation of, or just my research. However, in my conversation with the State Historic Preservation Office, when I consulted them, they are amenable to either K-style or half-round gutters. So when, if you guys do, or if you guys do have an opinion on the style, I do have one reading that you can have for the motion, but if you decide to switch either to K-style or half-round, I'm happy to assist with that motion if you decide to recommend approval of this application. So the property is presently zoned two-family residential district. It is .1 acres in size, located at 1218 North Bidding Avenue. It is triple listed, meaning it is on the local, state, and national registers, and it is a key contributing building known as the Howe House. It's developed with a single-family dwelling and a small shed in the alley. This house amazingly does not have any gutters. I looked around, I was, I was appalled, I was amazed. Due to the age of the house, it is likely that it would have had built-in Yankee gutters, and sometime, well, the, the roof was originally initially, or I should say, last replaced in 2004, so it was very possible that they were moved then, but in my observations of the house, it does not have any gutters on site, so the water is just kind of falling off the house. The applicant would like to install gutters on all eaves, two-by-three downspouts where needed, and replace the existing composition shingle roof with Tamco Heritage 30-year shingles. The following paragraphs are excerpts from the National Register of Historic Places listing for the bidding historic district. The bidding historic district is located within the city limits of Wichita, Satchburg County, Kansas. This small residential district consists of the 1100 and 1200 blocks of Bidding Avenue. It is bounded on the south by North Riverside Park and on the nor, on the north by the Little Arkansas River. The east and west edges of the districts are defined by the alleys on either side of Bidding Avenue. So just jumping down here, the houses also share a similarity in size and massing on each block, with the west side and central portion of the 1200 block containing larger Queen Anne story residences and primarily one-story houses on the south end of the 1100 block. Some of the districts and, some of the buildings in the district represent a distinct residential style. For example, the earliest buildings in the district are good examples of the Queen Anne style, while many of the later are typical craftsman bungalows. So a little bit about the Howe House, which is a key contributing resource in the district. This is an elaborate two-story Queen Anne with a steeply pitched gablet hip roof, having lower intersecting gables. There are numerous design devices to avoid a flat surface, such as angled wall corners with spandrels, wood shingles, and carved sunbursts in the gable ends, and windows of varying sizes. The main body of the house is clad in wood clabbered siding. There's a one-story hip roof wraparound porch with an angled pedimented entry on the southwest corner. The porches, or the porch columns are paired slender carved spindles, and their spindle work frees and ballast strain. An exterior chimney is centered on the front gable, as you can see here, and extends from the second story through the roof apex. It has highly elaborate recessed brick panels. There's a smudge, small shed on the alley with shed roof, clabbered siding on the sidewalls, and plywood panels on the rear. All surrounding properties are zoned two-family residential district and developed with single-family dwellings, and with the exception of the property the east that is not located in the bidding historic district. In 2004, the roof was replaced with composition shingles, that's the only thing I could find on the case history for this. Based upon the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, staff recommends approval of the roof replacement, gutter installation, and downspout installation. The roof replacement meets standard six, where it says deteriorated historic features will be repaired rather than replaced, and the gutter and downspout installations meet standard nine, standards nine and 10, which are that new additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction shall not destroy historic materials that characterize a property. And then new additions or, and adjacent or related new construction shall be undertaken in a manner such that, if removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic property and its environment would not be impaired. So this one was really conflicting for me because the gutters will be visible from the street, they will be very visible, but when you look at the greater picture, and namely the importance of getting water away from the house, I think that's what's most important to me. And if they decide to, I don't know, put in Yankee gutters again, I mean, removing the gutters themselves are not going to affect the overall massing integrity of the historic site. So with that, I am recommending approval of this application. Let's go to some of the site photos. As you can tell, I took these sort of recently, as Halloween is coming up, so let's go to the next slide, please. This is looking west away from the site, next slide, please. This is looking southeast towards the site, next slide, please. This is looking northeast away from the site, next slide, please. This is looking northeast towards the site, next slide, please. And this is looking southeast away from the site. And with that, I will stand for questions, and then the applicant is online to answer any that I may not be able to answer. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Christina. Are there any questions?
I would agree, probably until the last reriff, it might have had Yankee. Is there a way that a color choice will help diminish the visibility?
We normally, I don't know if we have the authority to dictate color.
We do not.
But I, I've been very communicative with the applicant, he's been very responsive, he's amenable to both half-round and K-style gutters, so I'm sure that the color choice will be something in a way that matches the rest of the house, so it's not as visible.
I think the round is a good choice. Thank you for your work.
Well, let's ask, are there any questions for the applicant who is available online? Okay.
Oh, I'll ask the same question as Claire. What, what's the intent for the finished color for the gutters and downspouts?
I, so, I actually hadn't talked to, talked to the guy about color. I would presumably do white, which is the color of all the rest of the trim, so, you know, I, so I actually live in the greenhouse that you're looking at, and my house does have gutters that came with it when I bought it, and so when I bought the blue house that we're looking at, we've tried our best to kind of keep it as historic as possible and, and keep all the, the cool charm that it has. And so, you know, we did the, the traditional three-way painting of a, a Queen Anne that, you know, doesn't always happen when it's a rental house, and anyway, we would try to, or I would try to do it as similar as I can get it to the, the trim color that exists right now.
That's great, thank you, really appreciate your dedication to the, to these properties.
Yeah, love the neighborhood, it's awesome.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this? Hearing none, I'll bring this back to the board. Do we have a motion?
Rosette. Rosette has a motion.
Excellent.
Rosette makes a motion to, my motion is, based upon the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, I recommend the approval of the roof replacement, gutter installation, and downspout installation. Do you want me to read the rest of it, or is that good enough?
Willenberg seconds.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries, this was an easy one, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate your help.
Appreciate your care.
Okay. Next, we have public comment from Barb Myers, related to the Highland Cemetery and Charter Ordinance Number 108.
Hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just readdressing the board. I know that you have been provided with a copy of the charter ordinance, and I know there's been discussion on whether or not we should have a cemetery board. I'm still, of course, in favor of this, and I'm hoping that the Historic Preservation Board sees it that way as well. I think that central management of the specifically Highland Cemetery, as it is a historic cemetery, is necessary. My nonprofit does go out there and do a lot of the work, and the park board is in charge of it currently, but there's a lot of things that get missed in between, and there's a lot of issues that need to be taken into account that aren't being, so I would like to see that the Historic Preservation Board take more of a, of a hands-on approach with the management and care of this historic cemetery. So that's really all I wanted to say, and I leave it in your hands now.
Thank you. I've attached, first of all, does anyone have any questions or comments for Barb?
Maybe not specifically for Barb, but I want to make sure we're doing this right. So it's a charter ordinance, and I understand charter ordinances, and it says that the Historic Wichita Board can give this power and authority to this board, and it sounds like that they should have, is it correct, seven members? Just wanting to get the details, or are you going to go over that later?
Well, my, my understanding is that we can, that the city council must establish that, and so.
The members? So we don't have to worry about the details, just approve the board?
We're not approving anything, we would be requesting for city council to take action and establish a board.
Gotcha.
So in your packet, I wrote a draft letter to go to city council, requesting, recommending that they establish a board of directors to oversee the management, preservation, and maintenance of Highland Cemetery. And then I've outlined why we think that's important, and that it is, they, they have the power to do this pursuant to the authority granted to the city council under Article 12, Section 5 of the Constitution of the State of Kansas. So the action that I'm asking for the board to do is to review this, make comment on it, and if, to move that we approve it and send it to the city council on behalf it, and if, to move that we approve it and send it to the city council on behalf of the Historic Preservation Board. Was that a motion? Can I second?
Not, not a motion yet.
Not yet, okay.
Okay.
I've given everybody a chance. If you haven't read it, it's a short letter. I've just tried to keep it short and sweet and, and clear to the city council why we think that they should do this.
I think it was a great letter.
I have a question for the Assistant City Attorney. So are we directed to provide any guidelines for them at all, like funding, or just the creation of a board?
Are you referencing setting out guidelines for the, the board for the cemetery?
Creation of the board and funding, do we have any responsibility there or not?
I do not believe so. I believe the, it would go to, yes, it would go to city council for the board, and then from there it would get that ball rolling.
Now, Celeste, we can recommend whatever we want, of course.
Well, that's kind of where I'm leading. Thank you, Bruce, because I'm thinking that part of the problem has been a lack of funding for the cemetery board. Barb, step in here if I'm incorrect. But I think not only should we recommend a board, but that there should be responsible funding to finance the operations as seen prudent by that board.
I would agree with that.
So could that be part of our motion? Can I amend the motion?
I mean, I can take that on as a recommended change to this letter that, that recommends that they be empowered, I said in here, they are empowered to develop and implement policies for cemetery maintenance and preservation, oversee budgeting, fundraising, and public-private partnerships, collaborate with city departments and heritage organizations, and promote educational and historical initiatives that highlight the cemetery's civic importance. Do you think we need to be more specific in point number two, that says oversee budgeting, fundraising, and public-private partnerships?
Yes, I'd like to see it modified to contain an item in there that says something to the effect of appropriate, you know, in the budgeting process that they just went through for next year, that they set aside funds or earmark funds, however you want to word it, not just budgeting, because if you don't have money, you're budgeting zero. And fundraising, I think Barb's already done that. Public-private partnerships, there's a lot of nonprofits that already do that now. I think what Barb's asking for is funding as well, so I'd like it to be a little more explicit that it's part of the city budgeting process to allocate funds.
Okay, so we would put that in our very first sentence, I, I think, which says, we recommend that the city council establish and, establish a board of directors and budget appropriately for the operations of that board of directors.
I'd be more explicit. I'd say provide funds, provide funding, not just budgeting, but actually provide funding for
Okay. Establish a board and provide funding to oversee, establish and provide funding for a board of directors to oversee the management, preservation, and maintenance.
There you go. Yep.
Got it.
Do we need to have a motion to approve your letter?
I believe that's what I'm asking for, yes.
I move we approve the letter submitted by Bruce Raleigh with the amendment suggested by Celeste Reset.
You sure did.
Now, can I second?
Reset will second that motion.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion carries. I will amend that letter and have it sent off to city council and report in, in future as to what comes from that.
I just want to thank you all very much for your support in this. It, it means a lot to the historic community that you guys have taken this action, so thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you. Okay, next, elections for first vice chair and second vice chair. So next time, if I have to run out in the meeting, Emily doesn't have to just grab my piece of paper and take over. So do we have any nominations for first vice chair?
I'd like to, this is Deborah Miller-Stevens. I'd like to nominate Celeste Reset for first vice chair and Emily for second vice chair.
Can we do these in one?
If there's no other nominees.
One, one motion? Was that your question? My apologies.
Yes.
If there's a second, it can be done as one.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Emily, are you agreeable?
Good.
I move that we accept the slate as presented.
Excellent. I second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you, Celeste and Emily. At this point, we'll move to adjournment.
Reset moves to adjourn. Willenberg second.
All in seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.